Okay, I have five o'clock so I can call a regular scheduled meeting of the Hartford City Council to order at this time. Phil with a word of prayer. Father, thank you that you bless us. You bless us by allowing us to live in a free country. But with that freedom comes responsibility. So fathers, we've accepted the freedom to govern ourselves. We pray that tonight, that that responsibility falls heavily on us. That we make the right decisions and that would benefit the people of Hartford. Father, we just ask for your guidance. Thank you for watching over us and pray these things in your name. Amen. All right, we've got some visitors. We'll recognize you and allow you the time to address the... Rob, I got you down later on.
Okay. I'm just gonna sit around with you.
Okay. So, uh...
My name is Paul Phil and I'm resident here in Hartford. My wife Debbie is here also. We live at 218 Wobry Street and have been for... Been there for the last forty some odd years. And, you know, we try to keep our residents looking decent. And I give no way that we expect the city of Hartford to do the same thing. And we feel like that they failed or failing to do that. Uh, I've kinda made a list of... If you want to pass those down to everyone. And I'll kinda go with those with you. And there's some pictures also. If you want to pass those around, I appreciate it. You kinda know some of the things I'm talking about. But again, I know we have a code enforcement guy. I'm not here to throw him under the bus. I don't feel like he has the support that he... I mean, if he goes up and knocks on somebody's door and say, "Hey, you need to cut the weeds out of the yard in the city. The weeds on Main Street are any high." How can they enforce that? So, uh, let's see. Let me... And I know there was a... He had an article where he's gonna beautify downtown art, Hartford, back in March. I know he put the sidewalks in, but I said, you know, what's happened there? It's just like everything stopped. And I don't know about everybody else, but I'm tired of seeing the... Orange barrels on Main Street. And I'll go on down the list here on this sheet that I passed out to everybody. I mean, there's barricades in front of the hub house. And I go right about that every day going to my house. And at the Dodge, there's barricades out there. And with the parking lot that's right next to it, there's variable room for people, a car to drive through there. And I seen a city worker the other day, actually last week, and kinda questioned him about it and said, "Well, they know there's a water leak there, but they can't find it." And I was like, "Well, you know, what are you waiting for, guys, that are coming up to find it? If you're not gonna look for it, patch it up and get rid of the barricades." Uh, got the barricades beside Jerry's, Vikings printing there. I mean, they've been out there for months. I know we finally did get the parking lot marked off here recently, which is good. And, you know, those tall weeds going right along 69, right beside Vikings Plumbing. And all over Hartford, I mean, it's just weeds growing everywhere. Well, I know there's a baddest parking lot over here crossing the newspaper office on the corner of Washington and Main Street. I mean, they're like over any high there. I mean, stuff like that, I know you think it's nitpicking, but, you know, to me, you need to have a city that looks neat and attracts the people to come through here. And the new landscape you put down Watson Street, yeah, it looks great. I mean, but you got the moody grass growing all up in it. I've gone down there twice myself and sprayed down there because I just couldn't stand looking at seeing it being taken over. And I've been doing a lot of walking lately, walking through town because some health issues come up and trying to get my walk in. And I guess I notice some of this stuff now, walking instead of driving through. And, but, I mean, lots of sidewalks that go on down 231 towards where the old Fred's was. I mean, you kinda walk through a sidewalk, I mean, they're just overtaken by grass on each side. You can barely got a walkway to run through there. And, you know, I'd say it'd be kinda tough for a person that had the face handicap on a little electric scooter trying to get around and maneuver through there. It can be a very, you know, susceptible for them. And, uh, I know there's a lot of abandoned buildings. To me, should be condemned or I don't know what the city has to go through to do that. But one is the old cleaner's building down here, the roof falling in on it here on Peach Alley. I mean, to me, the owner needs to be approached and say, "Hey, either tear it down, fix it up, or, you know, we're gonna condemn it." The old Dr. Blue House, what I call it, on the corner of McHenry and 69, it's been vacant, sitting there for, I don't know how years, I mean, how many years? It's right behind where I live at, so I know there's nothing going on down there. There's probably nothing being done to it. And then, of course, the Farm Bureau building, which I know that I've heard that the county has bought that once the roof has fallen in on it. Right behind Main Street or right by the courthouse. And, uh, to me, I mean, something needs to be pushed. If the county's gonna do it, why don't somebody get on the ball and push them to get it done? I mean, I think they've had plenty of time to do that. And I don't know what can be done but this trailer park on 69. I mean, you know, they had a shooting down there recently. And all those trailers aren't fit to live in. I don't know what you gotta do to condemn that. But look like substance services could be called in and do something about that. Doesn't mean that's a pretty nasty place down there. And then another thing too is where you got all the street signs. Everybody's sidewalks are done, they're just laying on one side on Main Street in front of... I always set signs in front of the newspaper office. And stop sign out here on... Behind the courthouse there on Apple Alley on Center Street, across from the Farm Bureau is just laying on the ground. You know, some of these, I've got pictures of whatever you can look at. And I don't know what's... What's your... I guess I'm trying to finally get an answer here. What is your plan on the sidewalks of Main Street? I mean, I've heard there are buildings there have water leaking in their basements now because of that. And with all the weeds just growing up in the openings and sidewalk coming to me, it just doesn't look good even like driving too far from there. But, I mean, a lot of these businesses, they put a lot of time and money into their business to make it look good. And I feel like they need some more support from the city. They'll be a little decent downtown. And like I say, I just... Me sitting there every day, I'm just tired of looking at it. And you got a lot of people coming from the counties to the library, to the community center, to the courthouse. You know, they need to have a decent town to come through to do that. Until this little coming through town and all these weeds scattered everywhere. And businesses falling down and barricades all up through the city. So, uh, you know, I'm just here to try to get some answers and see what you guys can tell me about that. And hopefully, or the plan that's gonna get done soon to get this addressed and taken care of.
Uh, we'll start off by saying that we are shorthanded. I've got one maintenance man who's been out for about a month. He's had rotator cuff surgery and he'll be out for another, uh, couple of months. I'd say it's what he's going through rehab right now, which makes it shorthanded as far...
Can you not hire part-time people to fill that spot to take care of some of the work? Can you not hire part-time people to come in and fill that spot?
I'd love to. I just don't have the funds right now to be able to do that. As far as the barrels, the barricades, uh, the landscape, uh, the landscape plots downtown, we've looked into planning those. Of course, it hasn't been a good planning season for that. It's been hot and we'd have to water and everything. And talking with, uh, the people at the garden centers, they tell us that even fall would not be a good time for us. It would be early spring. We put the barrels there to keep people from walking through there. Creates a trip hazard, you know, and people will walk through those things. And so the barrels have been left there just to keep people out of them, basically.
I'd say if you have landscape there, they're gonna be walking through that moody. I mean, if that's a trip hazard. If you still have landscape there, it's still gonna be a trip hazard then, wouldn't it?
Well, there'll be trees and shrubs that people won't, you know, won't... Probably won't go through as readily as one around them. And we'll probably end up going ahead and putting mulch in there through the winter to try to hold down all the grass and to try to protect the soil. And we'll probably end up putting some mulch in there if that wasn't part of the plan, but we've talked about doing that. The water leak down in front of the hub, uh, you know, we've tried, we've got a leak detection system. It hasn't shown up for us like we need for it to. Uh, they have looked at it. It is a good sized leak. And if we blacktop over, we just have to tear it back up again unless we have somebody that's available to look at for the water leak. Uh, the weeds on Union Street, I do know that that grass needs trimming. Both sides of Union Street going down 69, I do know that's, uh, the weeds growing up in the sidewalk. Uh, you know, we'll have to spray those, you know.
I mean, it needs to be weeded and go back and spray.
Yeah.
You know, to spray, there'll be the weeds standing there.
Uh, the uneven joints, we've had a crew in here to work on the, uh, the opposite side of Main Street and coming up Center Street to try to take out a lot of those trip hazards there. Um, the others, I'm not aware of where they are, but we'll look for those. Uh, I've sprayed down there on the boulevard area. I've sprayed myself and rings have been sprayed, so it's just a matter of gaining control of it, you know, doing it periodically. Uh, the edging, we've not noticed that. I'm thankful that you've called that to our attention.
I mean, it's just barely past one person. They're all too...
Yeah. It's like I said, you know, I'm shorthanded right now, but, uh, I've got three of them that Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, they're all... Their days are taken up with the garbage collection. So they're only available on Mondays and Tuesdays, well, if, uh, if something else...
I mean, I've been doing a lot of walking since, like, late night, early June, and all this stuff, you know, like, that's... That I've got noted there. So it's not like it just happened every night.
Well, you know, it's one of those things that maintenance people probably wouldn't notice it, uh, you know, with other projects that they've had. We've had a project to put in a tile out here at Park Lane and everywhere was dry. Had that request for six months and we're just now able to get around to putting it in. So, uh, unfortunately, broke a water line when he's putting it in, so that's another half day that somebody's got to take off from whatever they're supposed to be doing to repair that, you know, it's about three or four person job. I do know the abandoned buildings. We do have, uh, intention of cleaning up the... Or taking care of the abandoned buildings. Often times, it's hard to find who's responsible for those buildings. If there are heirs to a mistake, for example, they could be scattered throughout states and that's what creates a difficulty for us. We're aware of, I mean, there's a couple up on Church Street, the Blue House that you're talking about.
I mean, I know there's many more. I just live on this side of the street. So I just kinda concentrate here. I know there's many others, you know, other parts of town, same situation. But are they, are they working on trying to do this?
Yes, uh, we've got, uh... It's just a long legal process that we have to go through in order to try to condemn them. I mean, we have to put liens on the properties and, uh, that had to be filed. It's just a long legal process that we have to go to. We can't just go in and say, "Okay, we're taking this over," you know, and that would be kind of, um, a socialist move, you know, to do something like that. The trailer park down on 69, um, I agree that it's eyesore, that it's troublesome. Uh, some of those trailers are owned by the occupants, some of them are owned by Scott Lewis. And trying to get him to do something about it, you know, is...
I'll be embarrassed, say, um, by him.
Pardon?
I'll be embarrassed, say that I don't deal with that.
Um, I don't know what his thinking is there, but, uh, it does need, it does need to be closed or new trailers brought in. You know, there's a law that says once a trailer is moved out, there has to be a search.
Right.
Okay. Um, Center Street flooding, um...
I know they, they go great now. They go back to we... Back to we had this random thing. I mean, it's, that's something going on for years.
Yeah.
I don't know what's the idea or what's the...
Well, sometimes, you know, when, uh, well, a little bit of trash, you know, that people leave on the street, wash it down to it, leaves especially, people let their drains, their culvers get clogged up with leaves, especially in the...
Like those things we put on the river, you know, make the schedules go out, check them every two, three weeks.
We do well to keep what grass mowed we can, you know.
I mean, I know, I mean, that's just kinda part of it.
I know.
Well, how we feel too though is we pay taxes.
I know.
We pay taxes on practically everything, insurance, we pay as far as we're taxed here. Anybody else in the county does as far as the city person. We understand people are strapped as far as for money. But still, some of these things have got to get done.
All right. And it's not like we don't have work orders, you know, have a list of work orders for maintenance to do right now. It's just, uh...
Well, you see your city workers sitting over here in the police department or somewhere else. That's not on the clock.
Right.
Not working. And that's very upsetting for us as taxpayers.
Of course, sometimes, sometimes they start at six o'clock in the morning and by three o'clock, they're through with their day too, you know. I don't know what to tell you there. It's just, uh, the timing of when they're clocking in and working, you know.
You may wanna consider the district court as far as for juveniles or for people as far as that need to do time, as far as that you may be able to get some. Yes and no, they're gonna have to have supervision, but you still may wanna get some as far as to do some of this routine maintenance work that no one else can get to.
Right. Right now, the atmosphere for us using outside help is not too great, especially if we have the inmate passway out there on the street and that court case is being... Is coming up. And that kind of makes everybody a little cautious about utilizing people outside of hired individuals. Um, the street signs, they're scheduled to be put back up. They're gonna be placed in the flower beds. It's just a matter of, uh...
They've been out there for several...
The one my Farm Bureau has none flower bed this year. I come down that street every day.
It's actually a stop sign with the meeting, you know.
Okay, the one over here, yeah, I know, I've seen it down. I don't know why we haven't addressed it. Um, the basements leaking, we think we've got those, uh, that remedied. Uh, the last few rains haven't shown any sign of leaking in the basements. We had a terrible problem when, uh, construction was first going on and not sure where the water was coming from. We thought it was from the landscape boxes or if it was just coming down the side of the buildings where it wasn't caulked properly or what it was. Uh, there were some other issues that, uh, that were determined to cause some water to come in that weren't part of the construction. And so, uh, right now, they've been dry and so that's one of the things that we've been waiting for in order to, uh, address those landscape boxes to make sure we didn't have to dig those out and seal them over with brick or something, you know, change the plans there. Um, I know the businesses deserve better, like next to Jerry's building, uh, somebody's already backed into his building. That's one reason we put the barricades up there temporarily until we can get some posts put up. And we're looking at, uh, we've already contacted a person about putting in posts and welding rails, making it more or less like a fence and barricade to help protect his building. But it's, it was open, it was vulnerable, and that's one reason those barricades were put there is to try to keep people...
Well, they've been up there for some time.
I know.
Jerry can probably tell you how long.
Yeah, they've been there.
So I don't know what you call temporary.
Should've been there a little bit earlier too because they hit it before they put them in there.
Yeah. So, I mean, temporary, I understand temporary. To me, I call that a few weeks to not much of months.
Yeah. The only thing I can say is we do the best we can with what jobs we've got before. It's just things that come up like the water leak. That kept them busy for half a day and kept them from being able to do something different. Once, uh, once the other fella comes back to work and we get back to a full force, that'll give us... We only have two maintenance people that'll work at full time all week. The other three are garbage on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so they're only temporary. A lot of times, they have to do mowing on Mondays and Tuesdays. So it's just a matter of getting scheduled and going through the work orders. And, uh, you know, I appreciate your list. Uh, you know, this is something that I can give to the maintenance supervisor and just cause his attention, like the stop sign over by the basements building.
But again, I mean, I'm not trying to be hard about this, but...
That's no problem.
I was actually certain, I mean, we still get stuff there with that.
Right.
It's gonna like get some noise.
Yeah.
It is getting hard looking at it.
Yeah, I understand.
And it's embarrassing for downtown. It's made with the barricades there and orange barrels this long. There should've always been done about it.
Uh, once we get the mulch in there, in those landscapes, then we'll take the barrels out and, you know...
And again, I'm not trying to be naked about this, but...
That's okay.
But, you know, you're gonna put landscape in there, who's gonna take care of it?
Well, that's it. We're trying to find something that's low maintenance, you know, to put in there that...
I can see weeds growing up in that too. I'm not, again, I'm not trying to keep beating the dead horses, but it's just what I've seen what's happening.
Well, we'll just wait for, uh, citizens to come and remind us that, you know, this is something that needs to be done.
Or maybe they'll do it for us. Maybe they'll do it for us.
Well, he said he's sprayed, so...
Yeah, I have been going to spraying.
On this right here, George, down our old Tishner's, that ditch line. Shouldn't that be the property owner's responsibility to keep it clean?
Well, yeah, that's not, that's not city property there. That ditch right there where they have those trees.
To me, they need to be approached and say, "Hey, you need to cut this down."
It's all beside it too, though. It goes on up to the building. It's not just the ditch line, but it's all that side of the building.
I know another one, they have a picture of it, the one behind that, beside Bennett Cop Car, behind that convenience store, that same way.
And this one here... I feel like that should be the property owner to take care of that.
The county could do that one too. So, right here, where they park the sheriff's cars and stuff.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's the, like, where the sheriff's cars are parked. That's private property, it's not city.
They got the private property.
I know, I mean, we can, we can tell them to take care of it. They're just renting that, you know, from the Andersons, so...
I'd say good luck getting him to...
I mean, the Andersons, Andy has, uh, has some other property that, you know, needs some attention, I'm sure, because they did last summer, right down here beside Roxanses.
Yeah, I know what to know, but...
I've been volunteering my time with the city at work and mowing and weed eating for them. So I done it for four years by myself when they was working and stuff, and we tried to keep downtown looking good and everything. So, I mean, we understand what's going on. But I get up, I got up this morning at six o'clock and went out and mowed because some people were complaining about coming down Oakwood Drive, had looked, and we're gonna try to get them banked. So yesterday, I was with the maintenance before he went to school. And he said he's gonna get these signs set up. We went all over town and we're gonna get the signs set up this way. So, we're gonna, we're gonna get on it.
Okay.
I've been helping them with... And I don't get paid. This is my volunteer time.
Well, once again, thanks for doing it.
Yes, sir.
But anyway, thanks for your time and...
Well, I appreciate your interest, your willingness to come for us and bring this list. And like I said, we will address everything here and try to, as soon as we can. That's, that's the thing. Thanks so much.
I agree with you 100%.
I'm sorry?
I say I agree with you 100%. I've been on George myself.
We all have.
Okay. All right, we're good. Keep going. It's on Andersons. So, I don't wanna be the only sore head.
No, that's all right. That's my...
I got the shirt.
All right, be there. I may get one.
Here's your picture.
Keep on giving to your maintenance guy.
Okay.
I put them on George's office.
There you go. Bring them, boy.
Yeah.
Gotta do that. Okay, thank you.
Oh, thank you for coming. All right. Cheryl, Lynn, have you got something for us?
Well, the first thing I wanted to do was, I wanted to thank all of the city and everything for their response to our store opening and all. And, um, we appreciate the efforts that you and the maintenance guys have put into the city and, and we just wanted to say thank you that, you know, we know there are some areas that need some work, but we appreciate all that you guys have done in getting it straight down Center Street and on 231.
Your 15-minute parking signs close to go up, he's got that on the list to do. And there's one down in front of the bakery that's going up too. So those are on the list, uh, pretty good, pretty set up.
Okay. But we, we do, I wanted to tell you that we really appreciate that and we appreciate, you know, the trash can being put over on our side of the street. We're, we're very thankful for that. Uh, we also wanna say thank you for picking up our garbage because we have so much garbage. And so we wanted to say we appreciate that too. In fact, we would like to get a list of your city workers and employees. And, um, September the 3rd, we would like to offer everyone as a city employee a 10% discount at Soreheads for anything that they would like.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Um, the only other thing that I wanted to ask you about was when we walk across, like, we parked way back there, uh, behind even the lot that was King Drive's. When we're walking across that lot, there's, I don't know what it is, there's something that drips across that parking lot and we're slipping and someone has even fallen from that. And we're...
Again, that's, that's private property. And you'll have to talk to them about what the problem is there because we're not allowed, city can't go on private property.
Well, I know where it's coming from because I can see it coming out the building, but...
Oh.
Yeah.
Is it a health issue?
Well, it is, if, I mean, as rain as it can be.
Or is it just condensation coming off their conditioner?
Oh, no, it's not condensation.
Okay.
I mean, it's a running trickle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Shouldn't an ordinance officer take care of something like it?
Do what?
An ordinance officer take care of something like it?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Oh. Uh, I don't know if that comes under...
That's the only thing that's worrying us is because it's, you know, it's slippery as it can be. And so that's, that's one thing that I wanted to ask you about.
Okay. I would, if I were you, I'd just... Is it Kings? Is that where it is?
That's not where it's coming from.
Or Hospital? Is what?
That's not where it's coming from.
Oh. Where, I mean...
It's coming from the Capers Building.
Oh, okay. Okay. I would just, uh, I would, if I were you, I would just tell Dave, you know, that there's a lawsuit possibility out there that, and Mr. Whittingill needs to know too, so that, because he's gonna be held responsible the same as Dave would be to let him know that there's a possibility of a lawsuit because of, it may be that, um, it's a grease trap or something like that that's creating a problem. And they, I know we had a problem with their basement that...
Well, this is coming out of a gutter.
Yeah. I'd say, I'd say that they need to know about the possibility of a lawsuit exists, you know, that, um...
Well, didn't the city test that water and see what it was?
Uh, they tested down in the basement. Well, we actually scoped it out with the camera. And our drain is clean, it's clear. And I think what it is is they've got a grease trap that they don't attend to regularly. And, um, it was overflowing and clogging up their line before it got to our line. And so this may be some of that problem there.
Wouldn't that be Health Department?
Call the Health Department.
Should be.
It is for a restaurant. I've told them.
Yeah.
Well, I think it looks like if a business is having problems with it, it should be, even though it's private property, city ought to have some say.
Well, we don't have jurisdiction over it. It'd be the Health Department or somebody like that that would have that right to go in. They, I mean, they, they check all those eating establishments on a regular basis, and they're rating, and, and surely they're not overlooking things like that.
Okay, and here's the only other thing, and this one I'm probably gonna get smacked on, and I'll probably be the first one to get a ticket or something. But, all right, I'm just gonna tell you. I don't even know what a Hartford City Police vehicle looks like.
Okay.
I never, ever see our Hartford City Police.
Right.
And I'm like Debbie and Paul here. I, you know, I pay my taxes too. And I would like to see a presence once in a while of our police force. I mean, we're buying them new cars. We, I think even hired another officer, and the only place I see them, and I, I know they're out somewhere else. I know it's just probably me. But I see them sitting on the dang bench over there, and that's the only place I see them, unless they're eating somewhere, okay? I, I'm just being as honest as I can be.
I understand.
Okay? I'm trying not to be too ugly, but I'm just, I, I'm being as honest as I can be. And if we said we want two hour parking, they need to be patrolling that. I don't care. I, I know that you're their boss. You pay their salary. Tell them to get out there and do their dang job. I mean, I'm just, that's, that's your office, the whole council, that's your office business to tell them to do their job. When people call because somebody's in their building, and they say, well, they have squatters rights? Well, heck, no, they don't have squatters rights. Somebody gotta go out there and say, you're not allowed in here.
Right.
I mean, they need to get off their big butts and move like the rest of us. I'm just putting it bluntly here, okay?
I understand. I, the problem.
But I see, I see the sheriff's vehicles all over.
Yeah.
Okay? I see state troopers. I never see Hartford Police. I mean, I, I'm just being as blunt as I can be.
Sure, I understand. I know what you're saying. Um, I'm not trying to make excuses for them, you know? They do need to be out on patrol. They do, they do go out on patrol. They come back and.
I mean, in the paper, you read Beeperdam, they're, they're getting money in all the time. They're writing tickets for people not wearing seatbelts. They're writing tickets for people speeding through downtown. They're writing people up for hitting other vehicles. My son got hit by a vehicle out here the other day crossing the sidewalk, and the vehicle went on off. Didn't even stop to ask if he was all right.
Yeah.
Nobody was there.
Did he report it to the police or?
Well, no.
Well.
I, I probably should have reported to the sheriff's department, but no. He was all right, but I'm, I'm just saying, they need to be a presence in our community.
Right.
Because right now, I'll just tell you, the people that talk to me, they just lack the backing. I, I, they didn't ask.
I personally, I'm a member of the county. I don't even know who's on the police force, other than Leroy. And that venture is that heck, people in this town don't know Leroy's name.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying not to be too ugly, but I'm just saying, if we're paying taxes and we're paying these men, they need to be doing their job.
I pass it along to them and, uh.
And I'm sure that's, I'll hear about it, but that's just the way it is.
You know, the parking issue, we know every town's got parking problems, and, uh, you saw in the paper where all of us were trying to determine how they can enforce their two hour parking. They've got the same dilemma that we do, uh, since the chalking was done away with of, of the tires, uh.
Well, all of them have a cell phone. Send me a picture. Go back two hours later, if that same vehicle's there, ticket. I'm, I'm just offering a solution the way I see it.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm not so much even talking about parking tickets as much as just, they need to be a presence.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no fear at, at all from anyone. One of my employees almost got hit the other day because she was turning in Center Street and somebody was coming out. It's a one-way street. No one should be coming out there. There's not even a light for them to turn that way.
We have, just usually have one on duty, and of course, they can't be all places at all times, so, you know, there's a lot of people.
But if they would just be someplace sometime.
I agree. Yeah.
That, that's just, that, that's just me and my opinion, guys. But I, for, for what it's worth, we owe it to the citizens of Hartford to have the police at least have a presence. You know what I'm saying?
Sure.
When we've got state troopers out here in the middle of our town, and they're pulling out and writing tickets, and our guys, we don't even see a car. I mean, that, that just kind of defeats the purpose of having city police. I'm thinking, why even waste our money? Why not ju, not do away with it and just use the sheriff and the state troopers?
That's a tempting thought. I say about some salaries, some retirement and.
Well, I mean, and I, and I know that's just, that's not a solution, but, um, you see what I'm saying. That's just.
I know what you're saying. The frustration level is not reached its peak yet, but it's getting close, so I understand what you're doing, Shirley.
I, I know. So, anyway, guys, that's, that's what I was for, but yeah, we, so we really do want to, uh, support the city workers. And that's, and that's the day we thought would be good, it'd be right after Labor Day and everything. And if you wouldn't care to give me a whisp, we would, we'd like to help, you know, support the city. Because, like I said, you guys have been great for us, and we appreciate that. Thank you. I'll get you a list.
I checked your basement, uh, this afternoon, and it looks like it's still staying dry under Soreheads, so.
We're, we're working. The only place we were concerned about was, you know, right up front there.
Yeah, but I, I went up there, it looked like it was dry after the rains we've had for the last couple of days, so.
So, right now, we're crossing our fingers and saying, yay.
Yeah, that's one of the things that we, has prolonged the process downtown, uh, just seeing what we can use those planter boxes as they were intended, or if we're gonna have to clean them out and break them over, like the rest of the street in between. So, it, as long as it doesn't appear to be causing any problem, I think we're gonna head and plan on using them as planter boxes. If not, then we'll have to concrete them in or something, you know, if it's still causing problems to you.
And Mary, I'm like you. I mean, I don't even know who's on the police force, but that's, but I'm just saying, it would be nice to be able to see them and know who's on there, you know what?
Yeah, exactly.
But at least if I saw somebody I could recognize, oh, you're one of our policemen, but, you know.
I hear you.
So, I know, we're not, we're not Mayberry, but, you know, we're kind of close.
For two, matter of fact.
So, anyway, I've said my piece. Sorry, guys.
Thank you, Shirley. Appreciate you coming by.
Thank you.
I'd like to add, uh, the two hour parking signs, I've moved, I built my office there in eighty-five. And they've been on there then, and then the city even replaced them not long ago, put new ones up. And there's never been a two hour parking thing that had been enforced. And I said, why waste your money on signs if you're not gonna do it? Oakwood Drive, it was twenty mile an hour the whole Oakwood Drive. They made from Iron Mountain down twenty mile an hour speed limit, and the rest of it left at thirty-five.
Sixty-five.
And there is, uh, I bet there's not one in ten that goes twenty mile an hour down that street.
I don't know that.
I do that every day. I lay here in a wheelchair fast.
And that's, that's not very good.
Why was two thirty-one coming through Hartford every day?
I called Brent, the, I said it, always, when the school started, cause I was picking up my grandson. The guy, I know he was running fifty-five, and he almost towed him back in out of my car. And I called Brent and told him, you, you need to come on down here, some, we're gonna have a bad wreck. Then another issue down there on Oakwood Drive, they park in, almost in the street when the people come down through there, and you can't see around them. And they flying down through, so they, they help in coming down there setting some when they ain't busy. The city help.
Even school buses are speeding down through there.
Yeah, it'd be slowed down.
Well, if you look at half the signs on the streets, you may see what the speed limit is at one end, but there may not be one at the other end.
Well, that's.
Carlisle's that way.
Oakwood is pretty well marked. And I don't know why, mostly all people live along there where I live. There's no, very few kids there. But from Iron Mountain on out, there's several kids up there. They're little kids.
Right.
And they put that back to thirty-five, because I think people in Iron Mountain complained it'd take them too long to get out. If I don't know that, that's just my.
Speed limit anyway, whether it was thirty-five or twenty, they, they said there, there, it's fifty-five through there.
That was, it, our church said the other evening, and I was sitting up there at Walnut, waiting to get across the street. And I think it was the twin of the guy that drove a hundred miles an hour, the pickup truck that looked like the fenders might fly off at any moment. I bet you he's sitting seventy-five going right through town. And I thought, now where are our police? Well, along by one of them was parked somewhere. I wanted to stop so bad, but like I said, I don't know them.
No.
I mean, I know who Leroy is, but I don't know them.
I'd like to see, uh, a more routine presence at the school.
I would, yeah.
During, in the.
Speed limits flashing?
Right.
Cause I go through there just to see if somebody's down there.
Any more, I'd go, and, and I know there was a fellow asleep down there at the old recycling place.
People trying to pull out from the school out there.
Don't know who was driving it.
And if people that's coming either north or south, east or however that goes to there, they'll see you getting ready to pull out and that's beat out.
That's right.
I'm like, what are you doing? It's thirty-five through here.
Okay, moving, moving right along, let's approach our minutes and take a look at the minutes, and, uh, I'll entertain a motion when you get finished about, uh, accepting one of those minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor, up to your hand. Thank you. Uh, Tara's not here. She's way of training, so we'll look at the bank balance statements, income statements, and accounts payable. And see if you have any questions about any one of those.
Only question I had was the, are we still receiving the grant money, um, that's in the water account? Or is that over? Is it a timing difference as to when it goes in?
On the water?
Yeah, I think it was in the water. Two hundred thousand.
From on, uh, you looked at.
This is what we had last year, and then, so I'm wondering, are we still receiving that, or is that done?
That project is complete and done. So, naturally, they would have to deduct that out of that amount if you were trying to compare your current prior. And you have the same thing comparative on, uh, sidewalk, because we're receiving the sidewalk grant money this time, but we didn't have any last year.
What is two hundred and seventy dollars on bank charge?
Um, again, that, part of that is anytime there's a return check, the city is charged, and then we.
Pass it along.
We pass that along. So, bank charges are related to bad checks. People are paying fire departments because they're far due, and they're checking out. People are paying more bill on the check.
Do we collect that back?
Yeah, we charge fifty dollars for every return check. Any other questions?
What is meant by sinking funds?
You're sinking fund.
I like, uh.
For OTF.
Water sewer, I guess is what it is. It's W and S.
Yeah, that's actually, those are funds that, um, every month I put around seventeen thousand, uh, in those accounts. And that is going back from as early as nineteen ninety-one projects that we received a grant fund. But we also received a, like, a KIA loan, Kentucky Infrastructure, for water projects. Some of those we'll be paying on for over fifty years, fifty years plus. And the same, same thing like right now, if you all made, if you all accepted a grant, it would go on another fifty years. And so, I put money into those accounts, and every six months, the state pulls the money out of those accounts to pay on all of those bond series, like I said, from back from, this part back is nineteen ninety-one.
Well, guys, they know what it meant by sinking funds, cause my bank accounts are sinking funds. And it, and it never ends.
Well, you also notice on your bank, on your bank statement, the very last line now says, short-lived assets. The, uh, the auditors told us what to name that account, and it had to be named that. They tell us we have put seven hundred and fifty dollars a month in that account, and again, it's a lieu for bond payment. Um, so, city doesn't really make the names of those accounts. They tell us what they have to be.
I've seen this one on here, Save the Theater, and it's.
Save the Theater was an account that was created whenever this here was renovated. Um, they kept, we've kept the account open for purposes now of whenever we have a festival or something like that. The only funds that come into that account would be where we've had, uh, we sew t-shirts during the festivals, stuff like that. Money goes out of that account for the exact same thing, if we're buying trophies for the beauty pageant, something. So, that account pretty much stays right at about the same value.
Yeah, I know, every, every week or month, I see it. Doesn't look like it's changed much.
Yeah, no, we don't. And to less, like I said, unless we have some type of, uh, citywide again.
More than we owe on the fire department building.
Getting closer. It's getting closer. Whoa, is it three hundred and sixty payments that we had to make?
I'll get you a chart.
That's one dollar time mark that I don't have a chance of. I don't know. That would have been ten years, and, uh, I don't know.
Thirty years.
Yeah.
Can I do this, you guys?
Well, yeah. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to accept the bank balance statements, income statements, and accounts payable.
I'll make a motion.
All right, second. Sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, up to your hand. Thank you. Most carried. We now open the floor for old business, and it'll be the second reading of the ordinance designating Earl Russell Court, so somebody will read the introduction to that one for us, please. Any go ahead.
An ordinance accepting the dedication of Earl Russell Court and declaring it a public street in the city of Hartford.
Okay, second reading. Uh, entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I'll make the motion.
All right, second. Second, I'm telling you. Now, is there any discussion to this ordinance? If not, then if you're in favor of adopting the ordinance, up to your hand. Thank you, unanimous. All right. New business, under new business, close the Citizens Bank account. Do you want to explain that fifty cent account?
Yeah, we opened an account for the project that Ke, that Kenny would just mention for the last water project that we did. Uh, the mayor at that time asked that we open the account, uh, at Citizens Bank while over a million dollars ran through that account. Um, that project is done. There's really no need to keep that account. Um, it's, what we normally had done in the past was our bank accounts were at Commonwealth Community, and when the city needed to borrow funds, they borrowed, they borrowed the money from Citizens, so that way we were patrons of both of our city banks. Um, the disadvantage is because when you're moving money electronically from account to account, you can't cross the street there from one bank to the other, so, and that account has served its purpose. There's no need to keep that account open. I'm not allowed to close an account without the council's permission. And it'll have to be the minutes, and then the bank will allow me to close it. But before, uh, before law was there, they were supposed to start charging us to have, because there's no activity in that account. Right now, it holds fifty cents, um, and that was how we even got that project. So I just would like to close it because it serves, serves no further purpose.
So entertain a motion to close Citizens Bank account?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion regarding that? All right, all in favor, up to your hand. Thank you. Uh, I have a few extra items here to bring up. Robbie's here today. Uh, you know, we have declared that twenty feet of property next to him, uh, as surplus property. Uh, it has been appraised. It was appraised for a thousand dollars. We're allowed to sell it to an individual for the appraised value. So I am asking for a motion that, uh, council agreed to sell that twenty-foot strip of property, the depth of the property, to Robbie for a thousand dollars.
I make the motion to sell it.
All right, take a second down this end. Anybody, either one of them. Any discussion regarding that?
Take about a charge of five hundred, just for good measure.
We retain full use of it.
Yeah.
Okay, if there's, uh, there's no discussion, then all in favor of selling that for a thousand. All right, thank you. So Robbie, you.
Hey, if you don't care, I got a little something to say there. I want to disagree with the other two people that you had talking here. I think you done a fine job. I've been here, and I know what you got to work with. I think you ought to got a, a big note for, for, you know, you, you used to work for the city.
Yes.
And now you work for the city, you just don't get paid. And I don't know if you all draw any salary or not. I've done it both ways, but if you do, it's not enough. And, you know, if you.
Keep loving the mayor.
If you want to go police service, maybe you shouldn't have bought a non-mark car. But I see them complaining.
Yeah.
And I, and I think they're doing good job. Now, I, I like some of the other ones you had to deal with. I, I haven't had to say them all, but, you know, I know you're working without the help you need. I'm old, and, and I'm just trying to get where I walk without making sound effects. But if I can help in any way.
You're getting older, you know, with that snow.
Yeah. You know, that's, that's where we got a lot of help before.
Yeah.
We got it from organizations like the J.C.'s. We got it from, you know, like Lions Club. And, and, you know, uh, a lot of that stuff was done, like, you know, plant and fly. We, we went to one of the storage homes, where I had bought whiskey barrels, three dollars a piece. Brought them back, actually, we turned them up on the amp and put a barrel under them. But anyway, we ended up cutting them in half, putting flowers up, um, you know, and, and the city. Then, it didn't cost the city a fine, and that's, that's what you need. People might complain, but people can help. And I know.
Our list of volunteers is pretty short, you know, that people pay their taxes.
Yeah. But we ought to be glad this guy didn't cross Main Street going this side down looking.
Yeah, exactly. I, I thought the same thing for you. It takes this side down here. He won't get through his walk.
Look, did you know their code enforcement officer be here at the meetings, say what he's done, what he's wanted to do?
Well, we could have, you have to remember, he's just part-time. He just works twenty hours a month is all he works. And included in that is sending out notices and, uh, he drives around, but, you know, he drives around, just, he can't get every street in town, so, you know, he takes turns about the streets and things like that. I'm not going to make excuses for him, but he does, he does issue citations. He does, uh, pursue if they don't clean things up, you know, it's just like apparel practice street. You know, it looks a lot better now. It's not perfect. She's, she's got a mound or two out in the backyard that's covered over with plastic, but these is. Away from, it's in the backyard, it's not out.
I would like to see him.
If he's got a car.
Yeah, I like.
Didn't they, Kenny?
You know, we've got a few empty houses.
Yeah, carpet's up.
That look to me like they're, they're, they live over. Uh, we've got one out in Iron Mountain, a nice house that they won't even mow. And so as I get everything that runs, I'm going to go over and mow their yard.
It's been mowed though.
Huh?
It's been mowed. It's been shown.
Has, okay.
The owners are there.
Well, I mean, if, if, you know, if they're going to come to me and say, I need help.
Yeah, that was foreclosure. The owners were actually in Arizona or Arkansas. And it was foreclosed, and that's why that went on that long.
That's what I'll do is I'll tell my wife. She'll go, she, she won't let me mow. Uh, when she had her hip replaced, she'd sit inside the front window of the house and watch me mow and cry. So I let her mow it. Anything like this, that, that, you know, that, that, if there's any help needed, um, you know, we're old, but we can still do a little bit.
What about that house across Billy Wood there?
Uh, finding, finding the air there has been a big drawback for us. We've got to lean on the property, you know, for the mowing and things like that that we do.
It'd be a good place for the fire department to practice a little.
I tell you, it's a law anymore, you know, you can't do that anymore.
We ain't getting on cop to around here anyway.
And they did clean up Griffin Street. I guess they almost bought that house.
Oh, the, the.
Always tight. It looks good.
Buzz, don't play.
Yes, it looks really good.
It was a stinking place.
It looks good.
I'm going to get out of here, I'd say. Y'all don't get praised very much, and I, and I appreciate everybody that.
Thank you. Check with Tara, first, check with Tara the first part of the week about.
Okay, well, now Tara said see her for Friday.
For Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Just make a check out the.
No, you want.
I didn't know if she was going to be back or not.
No, she's for the city. She's in license talk Friday.
Okay.
Okay, well, yeah, what we'll do is, because I've got all the stuff that I need to.
Yeah.
Go run through the planning department lady. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, y'all have a good day.
All right.
You too.
These foreclosed properties, sometimes it's hard to find who's even foreclosed on. Because, uh, when I moved Popewood, the house beside me that Matt's lived in now, it had been, uh, no one's lived in it, but even lived, it had a lot of mold and stuff in it. And, uh, I mowed the yard several times because it's getting up to knee-high, you know, if it got any higher, you couldn't do nothing to it. And, uh, then they sold it to Fort House Doors, and I bought it. Three months later, they still couldn't produce a deed, so I had to tell them I want my money back. So sometimes that's a big problem, how, and you have.
There's a lot of legal issues that people don't understand, I think, you know, trying to foreclose on properties.
Well, the sad thing is the people that we know that live here in town, they won't take care of it.
Yeah.
Those are the ones you ought to go after.
The house down from me, I noticed the yard was mowed it first time this year. Did you do that?
Which one? Melton's house?
Uh.
And they're on the corner of.
No.
Not on the corner, but, uh, it's, uh.
Oh.
More right beside the, a upholstery shop.
Oh, yeah, I don't recall that.
Somebody out there mowing.
I just noticed it was mowed it. It hadn't been mowed this whole year.
Yeah.
And he, he's, uh, taking vacation in some penitentiary, I think.
Okay.
Well, so that, uh, feel Eddie Alvin on, it ain't been mowed this year.
Okay.
It's a.
I thought it been mowed once.
Maybe, but it's places over here. That old trailer is setting up for a green.
Yeah, he keeps telling me he's going to tear it down, tear it apart.
You know, I think for rats and mice and everything.
Moving right along. Uh, you have a list that I have to give to you. Uh, this is the surplus property that we've already voted to get rid of. No, I don't. Uh, you see the police car first. I have to tell you what, what was intended use, uh, reason why we're getting rid of it, and how we're getting rid of it. So we're going to take seal bids on it, the computers. Uh, there's one computer, no, we'll take seal bids on all of these computers and server there. Now, you see the fire department tanker truck. Um, Billy Anderson came to me about a week ago and said they had problems. The tanker truck is the second truck that they take out. First one, of course, is the engine. This tanker truck just carries extra water, so they don't have to go look for a hydrant, or they use this to, to extend their firefighting capabilities. It holds about thirty-five hundred gallons. It's a ninety-one model, so it's twenty-eight years old. It, the tank on it is a stainless steel thirty-five hundred gallon tank. It's been repaired, the tank's been repaired several times. But the truck chassis, the cross members are, and the frame are both badly rusted. And bad, so bad that it's, uh, we've had to take it off the road. Uh, we can't stand the liability of, of, uh, vehicles being dangerous as it is. So we've already got an interested individual who would like to buy the truck to put on a farm. And so I don't have it appraised yet, but once we get it appraised, we'll do like we did to Robbie's property. Once we know what the appraisal value is on it, we'll offer it to them for that price and.
Are we going to have to buy a new tanker truck?
We can buy a new tanker truck. They're over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. What we'd have to do is, like, just like this one, we'll have to find a truck that's a used truck, um, and hopefully get it for under a hundred thousand.
Good question.
Yeah.
The tank on it, we going to keep that or sell it too?
No, that's, that's one reason that the farmer wanted, was so that he could haul water.
Why would we have to pay for tanks like that, though, if it's usable?
Well, it's not, it's not, the grade has been repaired multiple times. I mean, they've had somebody go down inside the tank and repair it on the inside even. Uh, it's, it's life is not much longer than the chassis's life is.
How about being stainless steel, it's pretty.
Well.
It may work quite a bit in the junkyard, wouldn't it?
We may get more for the truck at the junkyard.
They have moved the whole fucking.
Wouldn't be appraised then. Of course, the engine and tires on it are good, you know, so they may be willing to pay, you know, pretty good money for it, but it won't be anything that make your eyes pop open, so. But anyway, that was, that's on there. As soon as I get an appraisal for that. In fact, right now, I'd like a motion that we declare this fire department tanker truck, uh, as surplus property.
First.
Okay, is there a second? Second over there. Any discussion to it? He showed me pictures of it, and it's just, it's, it's not safe for us to take it out on the road. All right, all in favor of declaring a surplus property? Okay, I've notified you then of this. And then on the back page was the, uh, Iron Mountain property that we just agreed to sell. I just have to show you, have that presented to you as part of the state law. Um, you've got a copy of the, uh, new revised year duty under the law, and, uh, managing government records. It's just to keep you informed of what the regulations are as a public servant regarding any kind of records or anything like that. There's, it's a second that you had before. There's just two amendments to it that came out of this last legislative session. One of them is that somebody can request public records now by email where they couldn't before. And then it's the, I can't remember what the second thing, you remember what the second amendment was? Anyway, it's a minor thing too, but we have to give it to you as part of the Attorney General's directive, so. Um, I had texted each one of you about the possibility of serving on the Bill Monroe Foundation. They would like to have a representative from Hartford to, uh. They would like to have a representative from Hartford. I had gone to a meeting, but I have had to miss two of their meetings for various reasons. And so I'm looking for somebody out of Hartford to be a representative on that foundation to just give Hartford some input, you know, have some Hartford input into it. But they just want representation from everything, from, from the cities, from the various organizations. So if you're not willing to, try to find somebody that, just tell me later.
Where did they meet and what is the song?
They meet out at Jerusalem Bridge, and they meet the third, thirtieth of every month. Uh, they're bringing back the festival. Uh, Saturday's going to be a work day at the Jerusalem Bridge, just cleaning up. Uh, they've got something like twenty bands this time that are going to be there over three days, uh, weekend. And this is something that is great for High County. The last time that they, well, they had it last year, but it's been about six or eight years since they had the last one. The last time they had it, there was, uh, there was representation from twenty-five states and two foreign countries, people who came to High County. Of course, that was money that went into High County to help economically, and so it, you know, it can be a big boost for us, uh, for High County. If we had a restaurant or a hotel or something like that, we could greatly benefit from it, so. Um, you know, we, we need to have some kind of participation out of Hartford. So if you know somebody and you're not willing to do it, at least, uh, doesn't mean you have to like bluegrass music.
You may, and thanks to George, you should be. I like bluegrass music.
I know.
I don't mean I'm sitting on the porch here.
I like singing.
She talks, so she'll be.
Okay.
That'd just be one more night in a month that you don't have to look, watch you going to be.
Uh, one thing that, uh, the next thing I have is that, uh, I had a meeting today with a representative from Kentucky League of Cities as far as, uh, they're into community development. And, uh, they brought up a suggestion, which I think is, uh, extremely positive, that perhaps we need to have a strategic plan for Hartford and not just be reactive, but be more proactive in our approach to, uh, economics, and approach to, uh, just living conditions, or trying to get industry in here, whatever. industry in here, whatever. So they have a plan, they would, what they would do is come down and try to conduct a meeting for any and all citizens of Hartford. And try to get input, you know, what's our positives, what's our negatives, what opportunities do we have, what do we need to work on? Just try to put together a strategic plan for five years, ten years down the road. And I think that's something that we'll take a serious look at and try, they charge about, she said about a thousand dollars, they may come off of it a little bit to do that. If they came in and did a full-blown study and made hard recommendations and all this, it'd be like fifteen thousand dollars. I don't think we can afford that right now.
If they take part of our comprehensive plan, that we're getting worked on now?
That would be something that, you know, could help even the comprehensive plan to be developed the way it needs to be developed. And so, but anyway, I want us to think about that and try to, she's gonna stay in touch with me and try to...
I think it's next on that.
See how we feel about it. I think just to have, just a community-wide meeting and just let people talk, bring their ideas to the table, you know, not just depend upon us to come up with...
Right.
Or, you know, so I think that would be one of the...
Well, when you go to write a strategic plan, you need to have somebody that knows how to write it.
Well, she gave me, she gave me a half dozen different plans of different cities and I'd be glad for each one of you to take one home with you and when you get through reading it, just bring it back up here. We can kind of pass them around that way, but, you know, just like the town Barlow down, way down the western part of the state, it's a little small town. They looked around, what is it that we can offer to people? And basically, they've got a Cypress Swamp next to them and they said, "This is something we need to try to utilize," you know, to get people in here and take swamp tours or, you know, if you have a restaurant, have swamp burgers and swamp slaw. But, you know, it's just try to, just brainstorm and try to come up with ideas. But sit down and just accept people's ideas about, you know, what are the opportunities that we got? What are our assets? What do we need? You know, things like that. So if you're interested in it, go ahead and pursue that a little farther and try to make our council a little more proactive in its approach to...
Well, I think it would be great to work with economic development, I mean, you know, and lots of the stuff we're doing on that.
Yeah.
Because we need some guidance.
Yeah.
And that, you know, I don't think you could do anything but get, you know, if you only got one tidbit out of it.
Yeah.
It's a step in the right direction. And that's all we've got right now.
Okay. Anybody have anything that you want to bring up tonight, any kind of issues or...
Well, what about moving the city limits out to two thirty-one? I've had people ask about that.
Well, before you annex property, you have to give the people that you're gonna annex a chance to say yes or no.
Yeah.
So they would have to be, they would have to agree that they wanted to be annexed.
Yeah, well, they asked me, they go, "What do we get out of it?" you know?
Well, their thing would be they get to pay city taxes.
Yeah, I told them that. They didn't go over there.
Twenty-four hour police patrol.
They get to vote city elections.
Yeah, twenty-four hour police patrol.
Yeah, they get to vote city elections, you know.
They get liquor.
The benefits would be that the water sewer service...
Well, their own county water now.
Do what?
Their own county water.
Right. Uh, it wouldn't be too difficult to swap them over to city water, but...
Police department goes out there.
That's the thing, is whenever people, you know, are being asked if they want to be annexed, they say, "What's in it for me?"
Yeah.
And for a lot of people, being able to vote in city elections or have police patrols or things like that is not enough of a incentive to overcome the increased taxes. Now, one of the things that I think a remedy that we haven't, you know, we've lowered our taxes here in Hartford about twenty percent. And unfortunately, the newspaper doesn't cover it, but you all, you all do. And, you know, unfortunately, everybody doesn't subscribe here also. But what I have to do is make the editor of the paper aware that, hey, we've lowered taxes here, which is unheard of for a town, you know, and we're taking a bite in our income to try to improve the possibility of businesses coming and make it a little more conducive to economic development. And so, anyway, I need to contact her, I will after next week, so. Anybody else have anything that you want to bring up?
What about this Parkway entrance and exits out there? Did you hear anything on that?
Uh, not really. I mean, we've got some people working on trying to find businesses, things like that. I really can't say much more than that about it, you know, because some of us just speculating and I just had to let it go with that.
Have you heard, I heard, I don't know who told me now, the city of Beaver Down is wanting to build one room buildings out at the park for people to stay in when they're here for their music.
The county is considering that.
I thought the city of Beaver Down was wanting to build one. That's what I heard.
It's county property out there.
Yeah, it's county property out there.
And Beaver Down said they would...
They're building, I meant Beaver Down, but they're running, I heard that they wanted to build some in the county park.
They talked about the park. I heard that over on the radio, I guess. I don't know where I heard it.
They have a couple out in the park, at least one out in the... They have one out in the park right now, I don't know.
Do they?
The county park, county park, yeah.
Well, we got a new camper and people done moved that one camper side of the house.
Right up there behind you?
No, well, they was already there.
Oh, really?
The distance over by the maintenance shop and stuff and they...
Well, I thought they looked into that and questioned the people and it was to, they were just, until, they weren't, anybody was supposed to be staying in it. I mean, we'll have Nancy look into it, you know.
I think we need some help with that, know we're on Walker Street. That one was threatening her and everything.
She said it.
Yeah.
Yeah, she said that.
That fell's not quite right, but he's got some mental issues, I think.
That covers a whole lot of Hartford there. Right there behind that...
We've not, we've not quit looking at our options there, I'll just say that, okay. Uh, we'll have to get Nancy to look into that. You might say something too. I leave tomorrow morning. I'll be gone for a week and going to Ecuador on a mission trip, so...
We gonna party hearty while you gone, man.
They bring in a load of sand and have a beach party in here, so. Fortunately, they clean it up before I get back.
We're gonna tell them George said we could.
Yeah, they clean it up before I get back.
We saw the invoice, didn't we?
As long as you pay for it out of your pocket, I don't care. If there's nothing else, I entertain motion adjourned. Motion in a second. Take the page. All in favor, up fifty ten. All right, motion, please adjourn.